All right, let's get going here. Louis, have we got him? Sorry, I didn't see the record button. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting. A reminder, this meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast at a later date on our community television channel. First, before we start, I have a couple of statements I'd like to read. First, as I was prepared to make a statement regarding the tragedy at Appalachian High School in Georgia, there were additional school shootings reported in Omaha, Nebraska, and Java, Maryland. On behalf of the Select Board, we want to extend our condolences to all of the victims, students, staff, and families involved in these senseless tragedies. The Canton schools have already put out a statement on their safety protocols, but the safety of our students and staff is a priority, and the schools are working closely with Canton Police and our school resource officers to make sure that these safety protocols are in place. We'd like to ask the Board for a brief moment of silence for the victims of these tragedies. Thank you. The next statement is a statement on Detective Kevin Albert. So the Select Board would like to inform the public that a resolution has been reached in the Canton Police Personnel matter. The Canton Police Department hired an independent investigator who conducted a thorough investigation of the allegations of misconduct by Detective Albert. Following the investigation, the Select Board reviewed the report and had an opportunity to question the investigator and Detective Albert about the scope and sufficiency of the investigation, as well as the substance of the allegations. The Select Board voted that the discipline be imposed by the Chief of Police, which Detective Albert has accepted. Select Board member Chris Albert recused himself from the hearing. All right. Next, we are going to go into public comment. So as I do each meeting before public comments, I read this statement. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns, but the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question-and-answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. I will remind the public that when we open up public comments, I will call on the people who click on the "Raise Your Hand" button in the order that they raise their hands. I also want to remind the public that I will not call on anyone that has an inappropriate name or phrase for their login identity. I will only call on members that have a first and last name listed. Once you are called on, please state your name and your town before speaking. Anyone who does not wish to speak or is unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the Board's review and consideration. So that being said, let's open up public comments. And the first hand that I see is Brenda Sweeney. So Ms. Sweeney, just give us a minute unmute to and get you ready to go. Still waiting for you to be unmuted. Just give us a second, please. All right, Ms. Sweeney, we sent a request, but maybe you stepped away from your computer. So we're going to go to the next person in line, and if there's time, we'll circle back to Ms. Sweeney. So Wade Hunter. You give us just a second. So Mr. Hunter, I think you received a request to speak, and you need to accept that. Perhaps you stepped away as well.
So we'll have to see what happens. This is my third time here. The police told him, if I come here three times, you get a restraining order against me, even though this is demonstrated free speech of a public official.
We can. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me on the meeting tonight. Just wanted to start by saying that here we are. It's another Tuesday night with another Select Board meeting being held virtually. How long do you intend to hide from the taxpaying citizens of Canton? I mean, seriously, this Select Board needs to be honest. You guys are embarrassing yourselves. Are you really that afraid of your townspeople? Have the Canton Police Department, has the Canton Police Department issued a public apology to Jennifer O'Donnell yet? If they haven't, and I doubt they have, they should. Is Police Chief Helena Rafferty still trying to go after the Canton Nine? How about she leaves those people alone? The clerk magistrate has spoken. It's not witness intimidation. It never will be considered witness intimidation. Has anybody on the Canton Police Department conducted any serious investigation into who is going around bleaching residents' lawns, such as Rita Lombardi and many others? I doubt it. This is not transparency from the Police Department. Canton has a lot to be ashamed about, but it all starts with the Police Department and the Select Board, the Select Board. I'm Mario Hunt. Thank you so much for having me on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ellen, if you could just put your last name in there, and I'll be happy to call on you. But let's go to Ashley Bell. Ms. Bell, just give us a second. Ms. Bell, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure if I was able to speak when this portion comes up, but I just wanted to say this. I'm Ashley Bell. I live at 110 Dedham Street. I'm right next to the Kennedy in the house you grew up in, Mike.
I know it well.
Yep. I'm just here to speak not only for myself, but also on behalf of many young parents and families on Dedham Street. We strongly believe that the town should continue construction of the meeting islands down the entirety of the street. I'm not entirely sure why the project was suddenly stopped. I think it has something to do with maybe the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods who have concerns about increased traffic in their areas, like Cedar Crest or maybe even Charles. I can't speak to the specifics, but I wonder if they have young kids or if they're empty nesters and not really sure what that deal is. But my husband and I have lived on Dedham Street for about 13 years, raising our four kids. And the speed that cars go down is like 60 to 70 miles an hour in a 20 to 25 school zone, and it's alarming. I think it's important to note that Dedham Street actually does meet the criteria for speed humps, but I think the islands would be more visually appealing, but regardless, I think something definitely needs to be done to address the speeding issue. And I understand the concerns about traffic backups. I just don't think people fully appreciate how fast cars go down Dedham Street, unless they live right on it and witness it every single day. And also consider the school before school kids and families are walking and after school kids are getting off the bus, walking home. There's a lot of baseball games there, a lot of teen drivers that are flying down there. So I, I'm not sure if this needs to be said, but I strongly urge the Select Board to prioritize safety above all else in this situation. Whether the concerns come from inconvenienced empty nesters or cost consideration, I don't think anyone here wants the burden of a serious accident or a tragic and heartbreaking car fatality like we've had throughout decades. In Canton, I know we can remember a lot of them in recent decades, many involving children and teenagers. And I know the town has often responded by implementing safety measures to prevent tragedies like Fencourt and Cedar Crest. They've done some changes to with a lot of the stop signs that they have put up. I think that's all they've done. I'm not sure. Following a lot of tragic accidents. So that just demonstrates the town's ability to act proactively and not reactively when it comes to ensuring the safety of our roads and our kids, and I hope you guys will apply the same level of urgency to Dedham Street.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Sweeney? Give you another try.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, Brenda Sweeney, Canton. My humble opinions. Let's talk about the joke in Canton called leadership, AKA Police Chief Rafferty and Select Board Chair Mike Lockren. Rafferty, only available through email or one-on-one meetings. No open forum for questions. What a joke. Leadership to her is, I believe in wellness. We need a new kitchen and a fence. Only $240,000. Not money for body cameras, upgraded software and video, training for officers. What a joke. Walpo's chief defends free speech. Canton's chief issues warrants. What a joke. No necklace, but it's a belt, it's a strap, it's a rope, it's a scarf. It's Canton. What a joke. No probable cause, no ring camera, no crime scene tape, no crime scene guard, no evidence tape, no Ford Edge, no free speech, no rubber ducks. No problem. It's Canton. What a joke. She says, quote, 360 degrees of transparency is critical to our profession, yet there's 42 minutes of missing video. What a joke. Who's the policeman on the video running out of the Sally Port faster than a speeding bullet? What a joke. As the whole world witnessed, Rafferty's lack of integrity explains a lot. We now know the jury can't believe the Canton Police Department is so incompetent, it missed 45 pieces of taillight. Where's your statement, Helena? What a joke. Lockren, it's his way or the highway. We ask for accountability. Quote, I don't tell the police how to do their job. Police oversight is your job, Mike. What a joke. We asked about Rafferty's accident. Quote, we don't normally announce these things. Then we promised to do better. First blame us, then an empty promise. What a joke. When challenged, he put you in a Zoom closet. What a joke. He renewed Rafferty's contract, yet refused public comment because they already had email feedback. I FOIA'd the emails. They said $300 for that, so I changed to just the number of yes versus no, because you know, they would have tallied those responses, right? What a joke. The exact response, the emails received by the Select Board were not tallied to determine the number of yes or no opinions concerning the chief's contract renewal. I am told there were emails opposed to the contract renewal, as well as many emails in favor. What a joke. Mike did exactly what he wanted regardless. Stellar leadership there. What a joke. He wants us to believe he didn't add up those responses. Do you really think that would have been the answer if there were more yes than no responses? What a joke. Canton, a dictator and his enforcer. No democracy in this town. Between these two, there's a total lack of trust and transparency, a complete failure of leadership. What a joke. What a legacy you two are leaving. What does the world say about Canton these days? They literally say, what a joke. Tracy and Dana's YouTube channel is called Resistance to Silence, a fitting name for yet another strong voice that's emerged from the crusade Aiden started to find justice for JJ and Karen. They stood with us in November and have organized a protest this Saturday from 12 to 3 at the Canton Police Department. Hope to see you there. You too, Mike. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeney. All right, Ms. Lombardi, give us just a second.
Okay, can you hear me? Mike, can you hear me? Okay, can I just ask a quick question? You said, you said Kevin Albert accepted his punishment or whatever it was. Are we gonna know what that was? Is somebody gonna tell us what his?
Ms. Lombardi, as I said, this is not a question and answer. I would just refer you back to our statement.
Oh, okay, but you didn't tell us. I mean, I'm just asking this, the statement seemed incomplete is why I'm asking that question. So the town is not going to be transparent and tell us that. Is that correct?
The Select Board has made a statement, and that's what we're referring to.
Okay, so, all right, so if my three minutes can stop, because I was asking to try to just get the rest of that, you know, I just want to-
You've got two minutes and 20 seconds.
Okay. According to the government salaries website, there are 40 employees in the Canton Police Department. 13 of them, for 33%, are in leadership positions. 27 are not. That leaves a ratio of leadership to employee of 1.8 employee. We are top-heavy in the Canton Police Department. That's number one. Number two, I looked at the government salaries for 2023, and I know the government salaries for 2022 are a problem. When I look at the government salaries for the Canton Police full-time employees for 2023, there are 40 full-time employees. Of those employees, 11, 28% raped in 38% of the 6.9 money spent to those people. Those people averaged, 11 employees on the Canton Police Force averaged $240,000 a year. Now, if they were all in senior-level positions, maybe that's okay. Three of them were patrolmen. We have three patrolmen on the Canton Force that are making over $200,000 a year. So not only are we top-heavy, we are allowing employees to make $240,000 on a patrolman's salary. There's something wrong with that. I'm all for people making overtime. I'm all for everything else that they get. But something is wrong when we have 38% of the money going to 11 people. We all know that this town is a generational police family town. And there's positives to that, but there's also negatives. When people grow up together, go to school together, play sports together, and even go to family gatherings at other police family homes, that causes a problem. That's too much togetherness. You'd never find that in a private sector. It does not have diverse thinking, and it has the problems that we are seeing today. So with the new, with the audit that's coming, it has to be transparent all the way. We did the scope in an open environment. We now need to do the interview process and evaluation process in an open format if we are going to heal this community and rebuild trust. There's something wrong with our police.
All right, Ms. Lombardi, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Time is up.
I asked a question.
We have time for one more. And Mr. Hunter, we'll give you another chance. Give it a second. There you go. State your name and your town, please.
Yeah, this is Wade Hunter from Canton. And I was just reading on this website, the Turtle Boy Daily News, a really sharp guy. Just about, there was a juror that he interviewed, and his juror said that the Canton Police Department are like a joke, and that they were such a joke that they assumed that they were incompetent, and they didn't find no pieces of taillight. You got that? No pieces of taillight at the scene, right? But they missed it all. But the state police found 45 pieces. And so instead of assuming that the pieces were planted, they assumed that the Canton Police Department, led by Lieutenant Gallagher, he's just blind. You got that? He's just blind. He don't, he don't see nothing. How, how do you employ all these cops and pay them all this money, and they can't even find no thinking taillight? Oh, and by the way, how come the chief hasn't said nothing about that? How come she hasn't stood up and say, hey, hey, state police, my, my, my cop, they can see stuff. We ain't stupid. There was no, there was no taillight there when we were looking, but now the state police and Michael Practor comes along, and there's all this dang taillight there. Oh, and speaking of the chief, where is she? Is she gonna say anything about Sandra Birchmore? Hello, I thought you were supposed to be this girl power. You're the first chief in blah, 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 girl power up, up, up the yin yang. How come she don't say nothing when a pregnant girl is killed in the town and Lanka shows up? Of course, Lanka's the first one on the scene, and what does he rule? Oh, she's a suicide. You don't even look around the apartment. He sees, there's a broken necklace on the floor. He didn't think that was a clue? He thought this, this, this laundry, there's laundry in the washer and dryer. He, he doesn't think that's suspicious? And what happened to Lanka? Oh, Lanka got a promotion for that. Every time Lanka covers for one of his dumb-bag McAlbert friends, it seems like he gets yet another promotion. And I know Chicken Tom Charlie's sitting there right now, drinking his iced coffee at home, and it's all his fault. Oh, the corruption in this town stinks. I've been living here my whole life, and thank God for Turtle Boy, for shedding the light on this stuff. We should build a monument to Turtle Boy in this town, because he's exposed all you corrupt dumbbags, one by one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our public comment. I apologize to those that we did not get to. You can email the Select Board Office. When any, we will be happy to review that. All right. Mr. Albert, what do we have first?
All right, first on the agenda tonight, we, the town of Canton is holding a public hearing. The Canton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 10, 2024, on or after 7:00 PM remotely via Zoom. The purpose of the hearing is to discuss the proposed traffic calming measures on Dedham Street. The meeting agenda posted at least 48 hours in advance. We'll have instructions to join the meeting remotely. Christopher M. Albert, Clerk, Canton Select Board. I move that the Board open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to open the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Conley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes, sir.
In the chair as well. Public comment, the public hearing for Dedham Street is open. So at this point, let's open up the questions for any members of the public. So the first hand I see is Ms. Donovan. Ms. O'Brien or Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry, if you could just put your, your name, change your identity, your login identity, so we can identify you properly. But Ms. Donovan, if you would like to go, I think you're live. Ms. Donovan, are you there? We are not hearing you, Mrs. Donovan. Perhaps she walked away. Or microphones aren't working. I'm not sure. The only other member of the public that I see with a hand up is an Emma O'Brien. And whoever that is, I just need you to change that login, please.
It's Meg O'Brien.
Okay, Meg O'Brien, thank you. All right. So Ms. O'Brien, we'll give it to you. Give us just a second. Thank you very much.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, apologies. I usually work off of Teams, so I couldn't figure out how to change my name in there. Meg, yeah, Meg O'Brien. I live at 215 Dedham Street and have lived here with my husband and family for 30 years. And we are very much in favor of installing the islands. We are empty nesters, like the other person said, even though we're empty nesters, we are very much for installing the islands. Over the 30 years that we've lived here, we have seen traffic and speeding increasingly get worse. Specifically, when Westwood Station or University Station was developed, we saw a major increase in truck traffic and a major increase in car traffic at speeds, as the previous person stated, that are more in tune with being on a highway. We have had five of, five mailboxes plowed down. And let me tell you, that was in good weather and in daylight. I am extremely concerned for the safety of the children walking to school, people walking their dogs. We have not done what our neighbors in Westwood have done, which once they put university Ave in, they installed traffic, the islands for traffic. They also made it a no-truck zone. And I think it's time that Canton does something to protect this neighborhood, because it is a neighborhood. It is houses up until Kirby Drive and a school, an elementary school. So I do hope that the Board will take this seriously. I agree with the previous speaker. It is a matter of time, I think, before something happens to somebody. And I think we really need to implement something to mitigate speeding and specifically coming down Elm, coming down Dedham Street between Eagle and Elm. It's a hill going down, and people are gaining speed. And when I turn into my driveway, every time I hold my breath, that somebody's not going so fast behind me that they can't stop. So that's just all I had to say. I hope that you guys will consider, seriously consider safety amongst, above everything else here.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Ms. Donovan, let's, let's give you another shot.
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what happened last time.
Did you get a teenager to help you?
Well, if I was home, I would have. Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. I am calling about the agenda item that we're talking about on Dedham Street. And I believe, is this a project that is being funded by the Mass Department of Transportation? I know you can't answer, but this is not a dialogue. I remember these days from school committee. I'm just curious because-
No, Ms. Donovan, no. We can, we can interact. This is a public hearing, so it's not the public comment portion. So we, so we can answer questions that you have about this agenda item. So this, this whole project was a combined town and Mass DOT project, so Mr. Duty, I don't know if you could confirm, but I, I believe this portion is being paid for by the town, but through grants that we've already achieved, received- but through grants that we've already achieved, received.
Yes, as well as the chapter ninety money as well. It's a check. Yep.
Okay, so the town of Westwood unsuccessfully has already used their Department of Transportation funding for a project just like this on the Dedham Street end of Westwood, which is the opposite end of our, or the Canton Street end, excuse me, which is the opposite of our Dedham Street end. And as soon as they put them in, they realized it was not working, and they've already been removed. So I think it's sort of a not a good idea to go ahead and put in all this work, and then we're gonna realize it didn't, is not as successful as it could have been, maybe in someone's mind or planning. But as you can look at the Westwood outcome, I think it's not a good idea. So has anybody considered the outcome of Westwood's doing the same thing?
So Westwood does have the calming islands. I know that they did reduce the size of them, but if you do drive up Canton Street, the islands are there. They did take away the signs that said the traffic calming islands, but the islands are still there.
I believe they removed all the ones in the middle, and they only have one at the beginning and one at the end. So there were several in between. So perhaps that's a compromise, one at the beginning of Dedham Street and one down further near the Topgolf End side. But I know they removed several that were in the middle. They were all the way down Canton Street. And zigzag.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Yeah.
So perhaps this discussion is continuing, since I saw in the Canton Citizen you were looking for public feedback on this. Is this discussion continuing, or is the decision made?
We're still discussing, there are a few more people that have raised their hands, so we're gonna hear them out, and then the board will debate.
Okay, so you are making a decision this evening? It's just a one-night discussion?
Yes. That is the plan.
Okay, well. Thank you.
All right, so next, I'm gonna go back to Ashley Bell. There is a Susan and a Louis R. If you could just change your login identity with a first and last name, I'll be able to call on you next. Ms. Bell?
I just wanted to say that-
There you go.
That Canton Street in Westwood is beautiful, and we drive slow down that street because of those medians. And no, they didn't take them out. It's a gorgeous, safe road, and that's what Dedham Street needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm waiting for Louis and Susan to change their login info, so I will go to Ms. Lombardi. Ms. Lombardi, just give it a second.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Yeah.
Yep, perfect.
So I would just like to say that I hate the Westwood Islands. However, you know, I heard that there was some mention of safety for the kids at the school. And so if it increases safety at the school to put the islands in near the school, then it makes sense to me. But I personally, when I see the islands, I just pretend they're not there because they're so annoying. I don't think they help aesthetically or slow down traffic. But if it will slow down traffic for the schools, then I support that.
Thank you, Ms. Lombardi. All right. Louis Raffetto, I apologize if I butchered that name. Give it just a second, Louis.
Thank you, Mike. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly.
All right, you got it right, so congrats. I live on Dedham Street, been here for about twelve years, and I understand the puts and takes of the calming islands. People think you won't slow down, you will slow down, blah, blah. I think we're talking three or four islands at this point in time. You know, the road is wider than it is than Canton Street and Westwood. You know, they've widened it a little bit in a couple areas. You know, at a minimum, when you look down Dedham Street coming from the JFK towards the hill, as Ms. O'Brien mentioned, you know, at a minimum, you will have something that will break up what would be a nice, smooth road. So visually, you know, I think that will help. I don't see how these will hurt at all, realistically. I know people say DPW. We had DPW on last time, they are for it. You know, I don't see the harm in doing these things. So I do support as a resident on Dedham Street.
Thank you very much. And then Amy E., if you could just change your login information, just so I can get your last name. All right, so Amy E. and Susan, I needed to change login information. All right, so while we're waiting to see if they make those changes, let's go to the board. So I understand that this was discussed at the last Select Board meeting, but unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I am in favor of these traffic calming measures. As the board is well aware, whenever the town repaves a road, it immediately opens up and becomes a speedway. We had a lot of complaints to the Select Board and to the Traffic Committee about York Street after that was recently paved, and people were flying on that road, speed limit twenty-five, one of the more dangerous roads in Canton. The work that has been done at the bottom of Dedham Street has certainly reduced the traffic on Dedham Street. And as a result, because there's not as much traffic, cars are able to get up to speed quicker and faster. We pay the DPW and the town engineer to solve these types of problems for us. Their recommendation is that we put these speed calming islands in. They were in for two months with no issues, no barrels hit by trucks or anything like that. This is an extension of an agreement that was made, I think, ten, eleven years ago, when the Topgolf Project and the Dedham Street Carder was being rebuilt. So we anticipated this, or the town anticipated this several years ago, and met with the residents of Dedham Street and the neighborhoods. And this was the agreement the town made. So this is really just us now that Dedham Street is completed and we're getting ready to pave it, the next step. So as one member, I am in support of these islands at this time.
Chair.
Any other members of the-
Yeah. I want, Chair, a few of, I would like to just say thanks to Ashley, Meg, and Louis for speaking up. And I think it's a really good point to say, let's be proactive, not reactive. Let's get this done.
Mike, you with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah, sorry.
If I may, over the past week since the last meeting, I did get to speak to quite a few residents on Dedham Street that were in for, definitely in for, one of the islands in place. In my discussions with a few of them, my concern is putting an island in the middle of Dedham Street is maybe a safety hazard. I mean, these islands, the temporary ones, will put in springtime, good weather. In the wintertime, when the weather's rough, when the site is bad, but truck traffic on Dedham Street that isn't on Westwood, I believe that is a concern of mine for safety on that level. I think one of the biggest things that I've heard through everybody's conversation is the speed. And I think that's an enforcement issue, and I think we should go down to enforcement issues. I believe it's an enforcement issue. I believe if we have somebody there many times during the month, in multiple months, they'll get the picture of the speed on Dedham Street. But I'm still concerned that it may be a safety for a while slowing down traffic. I've heard from residents that take Westwood, into Westwood where those islands are, and they say, once you get used to them, it's no different. So that was my concern, and I do definitely want to listen to the residents on Dedham Street, and I've also listened to other residents in the town. But I am personally not in favor for it. I know the board is pushing in favor, but I'm personally not in favor of those. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Conley, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, this has nothing to do with Westwood. This has to do with Westwood slash University Ave. When we were in that agreement, the lawsuit that was developed and part of the calming measures go back fifteen years. It had nothing to do with Topgolf, that never came up in the situation because Mass High was there, Mass Highway was there, and so was an SPS, who was the general contractor. All that road work, people have said, oh, that was done because of Topgolf, the only thing they paid for was the lights in front of the building, the six hundred thousand dollars. So just for the record. And I'm in favor of this, to give it a try. We gotta slow the traffic down. My main concern is the kids walking to the school. And it is a speedway, like Chapman Street is a speedway. I live in Chapman Street, it's a speedway. People fly. They take a right at Little White Store, and the Arcasses, excuse me, and they fly heading towards La Ponce Street to get to ninety-five as quick as possible. And a lot of them are from, coming from Sherman Industrial Park in that area because a lot of Rhode Island plates. So I'm in favor of doing this. I got a call from several residents. Most of them were in favor, a couple were against. But if it, for the sake of safety, I'm willing to take a chance and be happy to do it, and I would like to do it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, Ms. Sweeney, I see your hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
I just want to say that I agree with JR, and I'm not in favor of the islands, but I don't live on Dedham Street either, so. But I do want to say that when you have those temporary ones, and you have one right at the end of Cedar Crest, and every time we pulled out, my husband would say, some truck is gonna have problems getting out of Cedar Crest. There's a lot of deliveries for like tractor trailers with lumber and with big pieces of furniture and stuff like that, in that you really did not give room for trucks to really, sometimes they need to make a wide turn. So if you decide to go forward with that, I would suggest you move it away from the ends of the side streets. But I do agree with JR, but that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Ms. Donovan, we'll go back to you real quick.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just had one question. I didn't say I was totally in disagreement about the traffic calming measures. I was just saying, when Westwood put them in, they put several of the islands in along the way, and some of them were very zigzaggy and choppy, and the traffic was backing up because they weren't put in, obviously, in a well-thought-out way. And I'm wondering, has the plan already been in place for what it's going to look like? And if so, maybe I missed that at a meeting.
What was the question? Is the plan what?
Is the development plan already in place for what it's going to look like? Have people seen the plans?
Well, so the DPW had the temporary islands up for about two months.
And they're gonna be in the exact spot?
Yep, when they were initially set up, there were some residents that reached out with some concerns, and our town engineer met with those residents and either explained the reasoning or made the adjustment.
Okay, and I just heard John Conley just said that he's willing to give it a try. So I'm a little confused as to, will this be like the Westwood example that they set where you give it a try and then they're gonna be removed?
No, I'm willing to do it, just clarify it. Originally, I asked, originally at the last meeting, we had the first public hearing, they asked if we could, I asked the question, could they be removed? And they could be removed. But it's not my intention to remove them. And the Operations Manager for the Department of Public Works met with several residents at areas such as Cedar Crest, and there's been a lot of tweaking that has happened. I know that for a fact. So hope that clarifies it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then Ms. Bell, we'll go back to you one more time, and then we'll close the hearing.
Sure. Just real quick. The islands may be an inconvenience, but ultimately, it's slowing down the cars on Dedham Street where there's a ton of new families with young kids and babies. How can you be against this? The street, Canton Street on Westwood is beautiful. The islands make it nice, and Dedham Street will also be nice like that, and it will be safe. I just don't understand how a citizen could be against it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. All right, so I think that we've heard enough from the public. Why don't we close the public hearing, and then we can take a vote?
All right, I move that we, the board, close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Conley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes, sir.
In the chair as well. All right. So, Mr. Albert, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, so I would make a motion that the board approve the proposed calming measures on Dedham Street.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Do a roll call vote. Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
No.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
And Mr. Albert?
Yes, sir.
In the chair is a yes, so it passes four-one. Thank you, everybody, for weighing in your opinions on this. Next, Mr. Albert.
All right, so next on the agenda is, Peg Mead is gonna join us from the Library Trustees to ask us to support an application of CPA funds, and she's here to discuss it.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Mead.
Thank you so much. Is it possible for me to share the screen to show the PowerPoint that I have forwarded to the board?
Louis, is that something that she can do as a panelist?
Yes, she can.
Yep.
Sorry about this. Give me a sec, I'll figure this out. Hello? Sorry. I have it ready to go, I'm just having trouble.
Would you like us to pull it up on our end?
No, I think I got it.
Okay. Here we go.
There we go. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Peg Mead, Ninth and The Road, Library Trustee, I'm also the Chair of the Capitol Campaign Committee for the Library. And I am requesting that a letter from the Select Board supporting the library's application to the CCPC for CPA funds to restore the historical rooms in the library. And just to give you a really brief history, really brief. The library, of course, was founded in eighteen seventy-four. At one point, almost originally, it was in the basement of Town Hall. And then in nineteen oh-two, the Hemmannways donated both the building and the land that the- And then in nineteen oh two, the Hemmanways donated both the building and the land that the library is currently on. That original building was expanded in nineteen sixty-two. And then in two thousand three, it was renovated and expanded again. Um, this is just to give you a quick picture, the, uh, black and white is the original building. Which, if you look at it, is still the front of the library. Um, the two wings on either side were added in nineteen sixty-two, and then the whole back of the library was part of the two thousand three. It's, uh, expansion. And as you probably know, the library is, is embarking on a comprehensive plan to repair and renovate. It's called the next chapter. Chapter one is the exterior repairs, replacing the roof, the HVAC. Um, that's well underway. Good news is it's on schedule and under budget. Thank you very much, BRC. And its planned completion date is by December. Chapter two is the library park. Um, that will commence after the, uh, outside of the building is finished. And that should be completed by fall of twenty-five. Chapter three is interior repairs and renovation. And it's a, it's a bigger and much more comprehensive project than what I'm going to talk about tonight. But tonight, I'm just focusing on the damages to the original three rooms, the original nineteen oh two library. Uh, we've had extent, extensive damage due to the water leaks. And, um, as you can see right now, especially in the one room, we've basically got plastic sheeting and wood. Holding the pieces together. Um, it's obviously something that needs to be repaired. This is a picture of the dome. Uh, which has cracks, uh, lighting issues. Some of the, on the right, you can see some of the damage to the original plaster. And of course, these are original walls. So we're talking horsehair, plaster, dental molding. Um, a lot of it was done by hand back in the day. And we want to make sure that we restore this to its original, uh, condition. For funding, chapter one, the roof and HVAC were funded by Town Meeting in twenty twenty-three. As I said, under budget, yay. So we're great on that. Chapter two, the library park was funded by, uh, the CPA funds last year. And approved at Town Meeting twenty twenty-four. That is fine. We're all set there. Chapter three, as I said, it's a big project. And so we're looking at multiple areas of funding for that. The design plans were funded by the Vicky Chason Bequest of the Library and the Select Board. Thank you very much. We are applying to the CPA, uh, for CPA funds for a hundred and fifty thousand for repairs to the historical rooms. We're applying for grants. We've, uh, begun requesting donations because we want everyone to own part of the library. We've been selling bricks, which will go in the library park in the front. And then we'll be requesting the balance at Town Meeting in twenty twenty-five. Whether or not the extensive repairs and renovations go through. It's imperative that we repair the original part of the library. Because those rooms are beautiful and they've been used for a hundred and twenty-two years. And we want to continue to use them in a safe way for all of our patrons. So for that reason, I'm requesting the letter from the, uh, Select Board supporting our application to the CPA. Um, and if for more information, if anybody at home wants to know, that's our website right there. You can go and find all the information about what's going on in the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
Please.
You say that. There we go.
There we go. So, um, on chapter three, you're asking the Select Board to support the CPA application. For repairs for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
And then, uh, at the same town meeting that the CPA application might be approved, you're requesting the balance?
That's the plan right now, yes.
Okay.
And we don't know how much that is because that depends on the plans. And the plans are due to be completed, um, by December, so that we'll have the information for, uh, the warrants.
So, um, just because it is such a tight window, um, if for whatever reason, the balance is not determined. By the twenty twenty-five, will you just pause this project until twenty twenty-six?
Not the repair of historical rooms. Those we, to go ahead and get done immediately. And those also require, um, people who are skilled in historical renovation, uh, restoration, excuse me.
Yeah.
Restoration. So it's really a, a different skillset that's being used to repair these rooms. Than what we're talking about in the rest of the library.
Like the Little Red House?
Exactly.
Okay. Um, any questions from Ms. Mead on the board? I don't think I see any.
Mr. Chair, all I could say is I fully support this.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Chair.
Alright, well, um, if there are no other comments from the board, uh, Mr. Albert, I would entertain a motion to support this.
Okay, yeah.
So, from the select would?
Yeah, sure. So I, uh, I moved that the board support, um. Ms. Mead's request that we, we back the application for the CPA funding. To, to, uh, repair the walls and the molding and the three original historical rooms and make a motion for that. For a hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, for the proposed amount, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. So the Select Board will send a letter, uh, of support and, and put our name on the application along with the, uh, library trustees.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it.
Alright, well, it hasn't passed yet, Ms. Mead.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry. I know where you.
Yeah. So I have a motion in, in a second. Uh, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
And the chair as well, five zero. Good luck, Ms. Mead. Speed, and thank you for your work.
Good luck. Thanks for your hard work. Okay, so next up, um, George, uh, wasn't able to make, um, it tonight. So Patty McDermott's gonna sit in and discuss the Paul Revere Heritage Trust is gonna. Be holding a Halloween costume parade for dogs and, um, she's gonna parade, ask us for our permission and talk about it.
Right.
If she works just there, yeah.
Ms. McDermott?
Good evening, good everyone. Thank you very much. Good, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you. Thank you for having us on the agenda. Um, specifically, we're requesting permission to use the entire park at the Paul Revere Heritage Site for the Canton Pooch Parade. On October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, it'd be from ten AM till twelve PM. It's hosted by the Revere Heritage Trust as well as the Canton Lions Club and Maryland Company. The expected attendance is four hundred. If, it's a free event, the, the activities for kids and games. A doggy costume and parade contest, as well as food trucks and vendors. Um, I know the parking's gonna be requested to be at the, the MBTH Station at Canton Center. And I know approval has already been received by the Police and Fire Department and DPW on August first and August second. Uh, the food vendors will have to seek out specifically appropriate permits from the Board of Health.
Okay, um, can you just give me the dates of the Pooch Parade again? Is there a rain date too?
Yes, there is. The rain date is October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. And as far as you know, is that interfering with the Pox and Rec, uh, trunk or treat parade from?
I don't believe it is. I believe it's earlier in the day, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, have the residents of Paul Revere, uh, been notified to your knowledge?
As far as I know, I believe Allison F., who is, who is the actual program coordinator, has done that. Um, but I don't know for sure if she'd be the best person to ask that question.
Okay, alright, so, um, any other questions from the board? So, uh, I would just, um, make this motion, um, with the caveat that, um, the residents are informed. We had an issue at a recent public event, so we just wanna make sure that they're, uh, in the loop, so.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Albert?
So I move that the board approve the request from the Revere in Sun Heritage Trust for land use, use of the entire po- park on. Um, October twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to twelve PM, rain date of October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. To host a Pooch Parade, um, having, as long as it's, um, the residents of the development are okay with it. With that caveat.
Yep, perfect. Wait a second. Second, alright, uh, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Conley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yep.
Mr. Albert?
Yes, sir.
And the chair as well, five zero. Best of luck, Ms. McDermott.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, um, is the Climate Action Plan update. But I don't think Tom's here, I think.
No, he is. He's.
Oh, there's Tom, alright, sorry. I saw Mrs. Wexler, so I didn't know if she was filling in. So, uh, Tom Birmingham's here to speak about this, about this. Sorry, Tom, didn't see ya.
There you are.
Problem. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, I had a presentation to share as well. Would you like me to pull it up on my screen?
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, is that? Is that coming through okay?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you, everybody. Good evening. Uh, appreciate the time to present an update on Canton's climate action planning efforts to date. My name is Tom Birmingham and I'm Chair of Canton's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan Steering Committee. And I plan to review about eight slides in, uh, hopefully under ten minutes or so. Uh, this evening, I'm joined by Jen Wexler, who's Vice Chair of the Committee. And Rich Swanson is also joining us. He's Project Lead for Blue Strike Environmental. And they will be available for questions if there are any at the end of the presentation. Okay, I'm just going to walk through this agenda as quickly as I can. We'll give you a quick overview of the Article twenty-seven that was approved in twenty twenty-three Annual Town Meeting. There are three phases of the Climate Action Plan I will review to, with you tonight. Phase one, we've completed. Phase two is what we're entering, and I wanted to provide some more detail about that. And, uh, the purpose of the public engagement effort. And deliverables and decision criteria and timeline. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the select board, I'll continue. Great, thank you. Okay. Uh, as you may recall, in twenty twenty-three, or Article twenty-seven. Was, uh, resoundly overwhelmingly approved by the town. And, uh, these bullets highlight the, what the purpose, the stated purpose in Article twenty-seven was. Was to develop a climate action plan, which was actually already identified in the Canton's master plan. To do that, so this is taking that initiative, uh, to the next step. To initiate the possible establishment of a new town sustainability climate manager or related position. Uh, to initiate the process to identify applicable funding and other responsible economic growth opportunities. And, um, Blue Strike has been hired to help us accomplish these goals. I thought it might be helpful to just share with you three key reasons why I got behind this initiative. Uh, when we were doing our work with the Canton Electricity Choice Program. Uh, which is a new group electricity buying program, uh, to save residents and businesses money. And increase demand for renewable energy here in Canton. It became clear to me that Canton does not have an energy manager on staff. And given Canton spends, I believe, over a million dollars on energy annually. Uh, the cap planning effort provides a valuable opportunity to work closely with central facilities. The Town Administrator and the Select Board to identify energy savings opportunities. Uh, the second reason was that I, in reading the master plan. I identified over sixty-five different environmental-related initiatives that were identified. And it became clear to me the town could benefit from a more coordinated way to assess and prioritize all these activities. And so that's one of the big outcomes I, I'm driving for the Climate Action Plan. Is to help with that effort. Uh, there's plenty of work to do. We just need to make sure we prioritize on the highest value. Um, opportunities. And finally, uh, Canton has numerous, uh, energy and environmental initiatives going on already. As does the state of Massachusetts. And it's difficult for folks to track and manage all these policy changes, funding opportunities and implementation. Actions across, uh, a lot of different silos across our government. Uh, so having some sort of more centralized plan to help, uh, prioritize and manage that. I thought would be a good idea for the town. So that's, um, what I was thinking to help drive this, um, program in the planning effort. So I'll continue. Um, what this slide shows is the three basic phases. That, uh, we're going through with Blue Strike and, uh, our management consultant. And so what you see, uh, phase one has been completed, that was, uh, begun early in twenty twenty-four. That included a bunch of research and analysis, analysis that Blue Strike did of Canton's existing environmental plans, the state policies. And they came up with a list of potential action items, uh, for our consideration. In phase two, uh, which is officially beginning tonight with this presentation. We're beginning our public engagement phase. It's going to last approximately two months. From today through the end of October. And I'll, uh, I got a few slides later to explain a little bit more about the process itself. Once we finish the public engagement process, we'll enter phase three. Uh, which is scheduled and we're on schedule to hit that, uh, probably late fall. Uh, is when we expect to do that. Once we get through all the public engagement phase. And that's gonna be where we begin to draft the plan and, uh, go through the formal review process of that plan. Let's see, let me go to the next slide. Okay, so, uh, what the research and analysis shows to date that's been completed in phase one. Is that Canton has something called a greenhouse gas inventory. It's essentially a formal way to calculate our baseline carbon emissions from municipal buildings, homes. Businesses, transportation and other sources. And that gives us a sense of our starting point. So we've worked with, um, Blue Strike and, uh, some of the other committee members. To get that greenhouse gas inventory completed and other benchmarking data captured. Uh, we've also looked at a bunch of other towns, uh, and their climate action plans. The second, uh, deliverable from this phase was a framework to keep pace with Commonwealth, the Commonwealth's goals. As you can imagine, there's a lot of, uh, attention and money being put towards climate-related change initiatives. And the Commonwealth is, continues to issue a lot of new rules and regulations and policy goals around that. So there's a lot of change going on and, uh, Blue Strike has been able to summarize that for, for us in this phase one. And then finally, uh, we've identified one of the new initiatives from the Commonwealth is something called a climate leader community. And, uh, what that means, it's essentially, uh, a two dot O, a second generation. Of what's called the Green Communities, um, Act. And that is basically making additional funding and, uh, grant opportunities and resources. Available to municipalities who take certain actions. Establishing the Climate Action Plan is one of those actions. So we're building in what those criteria are into the planning process to vet those and, and, uh, see what that means for the town. Uh, there's, uh, a good possibility that you'll see recommended from us to pursue the Canton Climate Leader Community status. And we'll be able to explain that more as we go through this public engagement process. So moving on along, almost there, uh, just giving you an overview now of the public engagement process. Uh, there's quite a bit involved in this. Over the next two months or so. Our, our committee, the steering committee, has fifteen members. our, our committee, the steering committee, has fifteen members. And we're going to be reaching out to approximately twenty different department leads within the town. And, uh, quick shout out to, uh, Town Administrator Duty for helping us uh, facilitate that effort. And we're going to interview these different, uh, town department leads on a number of different things, what they've currently doing, what they've done, lessons learned, what they'd like to see done, and how could the steering committee help them do their job more effectively, and what, what help do they need? To prepare the town for, uh, additional weather, extreme weather events, as an example. We're also preparing to, uh, request permission from various boards and committees. There's about twenty that we've identified to, uh, reach out to them, explain what we're up to, see if we can get their support and, uh, help them get the word out. On the third point is, uh, our community partners and general public. We've got a community survey that's being finalized this week. And, uh, we'll make that available to the general public to see comment and input on people's concerns and things they would like to see done to help mitigate climate change, extreme weather, and, uh, improve our energy efficiency and renewable energy usage in the town. And the public awareness campaign itself, item four, we've got a press release that's being drafted. We'll go, uh, into the Canton citizen interviews on Canton Cable Television, social media posts. And we've got, uh, two community meetings scheduled, one on the fourth of October at the Senior Center and one on the seventeenth at the Community, uh, Room in the Public Library. Again, with the idea of seeking, uh, comment and ideas from the public on what they'd like to see us focus on. So that's the core of the public engagement process, you know, the people that we're going to be reaching out to. Um, some of the reasons why we're doing this, uh, increased awareness about the work that the steering committee is doing. Educate the public about pollution and extreme weather-related issues to plan for. Uh, collect valuable input, uh, to help shape the plan, and then finally build support for approval of the plan at the two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting, which is when we expect to, uh, have this, uh, wrapped up in before the, before the public on that. And I think we got the last substantive slide here is, uh, deliverables and decision criteria. Um, just so people understand, how are we making a decision about what initiatives to recommend? How to prioritize our work? Um, we've got eight different program areas that we're covering. Examples include energy conservation, renewables, building, uh, the built environment buildings, uh, and mobility, transportation and public health are some examples of those areas that we're focused on. And we're going to prioritize our recommended actions based on these criteria to make sure that has a material impact on mitigating and adapting to climate change. Be feasible. We have to understand the costs and the benefits and the funding opportunities related to these initiatives. They need to be consistent with Canton's values and needs and benefit Canton with regard to environmental justice in our most vulnerable communities, which includes young children, elders and those with chronic illnesses. And let's see, I actually think I got one more slide here to wrap up, and that's the timeline. Okay, I've kind of mentioned this already. A couple of key milestones, the week of this, uh, September sixteenth, starting next week, we'll begin meeting with departments, boards and committees and trying to get those scheduled. We're doing that now. By the end of this month, we'll, uh, kick off our community survey, I mentioned. Uh, midway through October, we hope to be able to wrap up all our department board and committee meetings. And then finally wrap up the survey the week of the twenty-eighth of October. So we've got a full plate ahead of us. Several weeks to get this done. It's aggressive schedule, but we've got a lot of support and help, uh, behind this. And we're looking forward, um, to having a solid engagement opportunity with the community. And we understand this is a complex and serious set of issues to manage. But we look forward to continuing to help educate the public on the purpose of this climate action plan, and we, uh, thank the select board for their support. And, uh, that's the formal presentation. I'll open it up to questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Birmingham. Um, could you go back to, uh, slide number three?
Sure. This one?
Uh, yes, um, to towns, and I, I apologize if I asked you this question before and don't recall the answer, but do towns share this res- resource of a climate manager? Does Sharon have one? Is, is that what I'm thinking of?
Uh, they do. Uh, some towns have their own, sometimes, some, some towns share that resource. Um, we've been in discussions with the town of Stoughton, uh, and their energy manager, uh, there's a possibility that we may, uh, be able to come up with some sharing arrangement with them. It's preliminary discussions, but obviously we run that by the select board.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, I see that at some point this would grow into a much bigger role, but uh, maybe as we're starting out, it's a, a smaller role at, at first.
Yeah, it can be a part-time role for sure.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, for slide six, you were talking about the public engagement and you listed a couple of events. Um, will, will you just email the select board?
Yeah.
Um, tho- those details, I, um, I, I'd like to invite members of the select board uh, to try to attend, uh, at least one of those so that, uh, we are all so well-informed and can answer the questions that are likely to come our way.
Sure, absolutely. Um, what I was thinking, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, is, uh, we're in the process of putting all this schedule together.
Yep.
Um, what we're hoping to do is have that ready for your next, uh, select board meeting in two weeks and then provide you with that detail so you can make an announcement and then we'll have that, hopefully we'll have it available on the town website and other channels as well, a, a schedule.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Okay, um, any other questions for Mr. Birmingham or Ms. We- Wexler? From the board? All right. Hearing none, I just want to make sure that I see everybody, okay? Uh, hearing none? I guess, uh, there's not a, um, there's not a motion on this one.
No, no more, no, just an update.
Then, uh, Mr. Birmingham, we hope to see you at the next select board meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wexler. All right, next, Mr. Albert.
So next is, I think you're going to speak to this, but it's the Tom, uh, gunning lacrosse wall at the Canton High School.
Yes, thank you. Um, so for those that, um, might not be aware, um, Mr. Tom Gunning passed away several years ago. Uh, he was a huge advocate for lacrosse. And there was a request to build a lacrosse wall, which is, uh, approximately a ten-foot-high uh, cement wall where lacrosse players, uh, can practice. So think of playing tennis against a brick wall. It's the same thing for lacrosse. Uh, it almost looks like a, a jersey barrier, uh, but much, much taller. Um, this is a project that has been going on for years. Uh, I was actually on the school committee when this first started. Uh, and it unfortunately has, um, not come to fruition. So, um, I have met with the, uh, current, uh, Canton youth lacrosse, uh, members. I have met with, uh, Mr. Erickson and, uh, Mr. Billy Walsh, uh, the DPW down at the high school, uh, to look at possible locations, uh, for this. So, uh, if you are on the football field and you are facing, uh, the home stands, which are the tall, uh, stands, um, directly to the right of that, there is open space. And there is a chain link fence, uh, with a walking path, uh, further beyond that. Uh, the ideal scenario is to put a jog in that fence and put the wall closer to that walking path. Um, so I am bringing this to the select board, uh, because I wanted to inform you uh, that I would like us to support this project. It does need to go to, uh, zoning for an informal hearing, and it is close to the wetlands, so it will need to go through, uh, the conservation process. Um, but Lacrosse has the money, um, to purchase this wall. They have the, uh, subcontractor, uh, ready to install it. Nothing's been ordered yet. Um, I've talked to the DPW and they're willing to do a concrete pad, uh, as the base for this wall. And, um, I just wanted the board to be aware that I, I would like to proceed um, with the zoning and the conservation process so that we can finally get this wall built and, and hopefully have it up for, uh, spring lacrosse. So, uh, any questions on that?
Great idea. Mr. Chairman, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. All right, so, um, in, unless there's any opposition, we don't need a motion for this. This is really just the will of the board. Uh, that the board is okay that I proceed in this direction. And so, Mr. Albert, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Way to go.
Thank you, and Mr. Conley already expressed his support, so, uh, I will be proceeding in this and I will give the board updates uh, as I happen, but thank you for your support.
Great job.
Next, Mr. Albert.
All right, next up is, uh, to consider the vote from the select board for the Metropolitan Skating Rink, uh, Punk Rock Skating Rink, um, to increase the rates. Uh, Mr. Scollins is going to speak about this.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Town Administrator. Tyler Radiconi, Recreation Director, and I are requesting support for Metropolis Ice Rink rental rate increase request that needs to be made to the State Commissioner of the Department of Recreation and Conservation, Mr. Brian Arigo. The town leases the Metropolis Rink from DCR, as you know. Uh, so we met back in June with representatives from DCR to learn about the process to increase the rental rates, and we're instructed to provide the following items and submit to Commissioner Arigo. A letter of support from our select board, letters of support from our legislative delegation, statements of compliance with two executive orders, Executive Order five ninety-four regarding the state's green energy goals, Executive Order six nineteen regarding the prohibition of single-use plastic bottles at the rink, four years of historical revenue and expense results, six years of projected revenues and expenses, discussion of the investments made in the Metropolis facility. The last date the rink rental rates were changed, when it, which is when it reopened in late two thousand and twenty. The last date, uh, a, a comparison to private rink rates in the area, and we're thirty-four percent below the average. And in a comparison to DCR rink rates in the area, we're fifteen percent above the average, however, the Canton Rink Enterprise Fund must be self-sustaining, unlike the DCR rinks. So we've compiled all of this information, uh, in the document you received and ready to forward to DCR Commissioner, uh, pending your vote of support. Current rink rental rates are two hundred and sixty dollars per fifty-minute sheet of ice for youth and high school renters, two hundred and seventy-five dollars per fifty-minute sheet of ice for private hockey rentals. And the request is to increase the rates by about thirteen percent from two hundred and sixty dollars to two hundred and ninety-five dollars for youth and high school, or a thirty-five dollar per sheet increase. And two hundred and seventy-five dollars to three hundred and ten dollars for private hockey rentals, also a thirty-five dollar per sheet increase. And based on the current skater utilization and expense forecast, those rates should sustain the rink for the next six years. That was something that we were, um, encouraged to do is to not plan to come back, uh, over the short term, but to ask for a rate increase that would last uh, for, uh, an intermediate term, which I believe this does. Uh, without the requested increase, we project a deficit of about two hundred and ten thousand within the, uh, the Rink Enterprise Fund um, within the next six years. So I'm happy to take any questions and hope you will vote support for this request.
Thank you, Mr. Scollins. I, um, I have three questions. Um, once we, uh, if, if we agree to raise these rates, is DCR going to change the rate that they're charging us? I mean, and I know you might not be able to answer that, but, right, because we're paying them. We'll lease this from them, so.
Yes, it, it would apply to, um, the Canton, uh, high school hockey rates, correct, and, and the youth leagues. Everybody can charge the same.
Um, was the youth league, um, one of the bigger percentage increases? Did I hear that right?
Um, no, the, the, the percentage increases, uh, were thirteen percent approximately for both um, the, uh, the youth in high school, uh, and the privates. So both were approximately thirteen percent or thirty-five dollars per sheet.
Okay, so consistent, okay. And then, um, has this been conveyed to the school, like, so they know that this is coming? Because I assume that it's for this coming season.
It, it is for the season, uh, but we haven't, haven't advanced it, uh, past, uh, this, uh, meeting with the board here.
Okay. Right, only because. Yeah, they, they, their user fees are already, you know, probably decided by the school committee, and, and this would be a a, a wrinkle in that, um, because.
Yeah, I, I apologize for that. This was, um, you've heard the, the long list and you saw the document that was provided. Um, uh, there was, uh, took a while to assemble all of the witch's brooms here, uh, that we were required to get. Uh, so that's why we're at the stage of the season to make the request.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Conley, I see your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, through you to, uh, Mr. Scollins. Uh, is it, is your general assumption that, wow, once we get all the information submitted, that it would be approved?
Yes.
Because we just got this, we just bought the second, uh, electric Zamboni, you know, things like that, and um, a ten-million-dollar rink ended up costing the town, um, all the good work a lot of people did. Uh, so, uh, if it would be a, a go, I would hope it'd be a go.
So. Yes, we're sending this directly to the Commissioner, um, the Attorney for DCR and the other two advisors we spoke with uh, to, to the Commissioner. Uh, they want it to be copied on, on what was sent because they, they support our request. Um, so they want it, they want to usher it along, uh, a- as soon as we send it in, which, assuming a letter of support, we would send that in tomorrow.
And one final question, Mr. Chairman.
Um, yep.
If I heard you correctly, uh, we can't go back to, to, to the trough for another six years. Is that, was that what I understood?
Well, w- w- we could, um, but they're, uh, they're discouraging us from uh, trying to do a year-to-year or a couple of year, uh, increase. So that's why we were asked to, to do a five-to-six-year forecast to see, uh, how, uh, how we would fare. And, um, so the goal was to, um, land at a retained earnings. It's an enterprise fund. Land at a retained earnings of about a hundred and thou- hundred thousand dollars, which is right about where we are right now, and, and that would, you know, cover any, um, aberrations in expense or, 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 or capital. Without it, would, would be short a couple hundred thousand within six years.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Randy, I, I just, um, I don't love the timing of this, and I, and I understand the reasoning behind it. But there, there's, I mean, Canton, as you know, is a hockey town, and, uh, I expect I'm going to get an awful lot of phone calls, uh, probably at the end of this meeting, so. Uh, Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Randy, maybe I'm following you, maybe I'm not. I know you said that it makes sense to do the thirteen percent all at once, but to Mike's point, to throw this all of a sudden out there when hockey practice probably has already started, the captain's practices and stuff. So, could it be like a less bitter pill to swallow? Could it be like a six and a half percent, six and a half percent, just so they get their minds around it? Because it just is a giant giant.
Sure.
Increase.
Absolutely. I, 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 I hear the concerns. Um, and again, it's, it's a timing that unfortunately we weren't a, able to to manage, so I'm, I'm happy to, um, to make the request for the increase in rates um, to start, uh, next year, if, if that would, uh, make it a little bit smoother, uh, to go down. And that way, though, it'll be in place for five years, and we don't necessarily land, uh, at, uh, about a hundred thousand in, in six years, but, um, we won't be that far off with one year.
But, um, Mr. Scollins, we'll run into a deficit this year.
No, we won't, we won't. It's, um, as we look at the escalation of, of all the expenses uh, that it takes, the electricity, um, the, uh, you know, the, the labor, various costs. Um, you know, we, we will run into deficits, you know, starting in, um, the fourth, fifth, and, 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 and six years. So we won't run into a deficit this year. Uh, all things being equal, so, um, this, this is a good suggestion, so I'm happy to modify um, the request to, to be, uh, delayed, uh, the request to go in now, but for it to be effective, uh, for the next season.
Okay, Mr. Albert? Okay. Mister Albert?
Yeah, so Randy, if I'm here, through you, Mister Chair, if I'm hearing you correctly, so the forecast was to to generate about a hundred thousand over the course of six years, is that correct?
Right, to have a have a retained earnings or a surplus, if you will, of about a hundred thousand, which is where we stand right now.
Okay, alright. I got it. Thanks.
Mister Conley?
Yes, one final question, if I may, I'm, I apologize. Um, I know some people wanna go watch the debate, so I'll be brief. Um. The Ice House just got sold. Any idea what their new, what their new rates are going to be? And I assume that we're we're still tied by the DCR, we can't go up as we're a private entity, whereas we're public. So I'm sure the public, the private rinks around here don't have to do that. There's one up in um, Ma- up off of Marshall Street, see the, see the drive. And um, the Ice Houses at what? The new Ice House, I should say. Thank you.
The um, the Ice House is currently uh at uh four twenty-five. As a comparable rate to our current two sixty-five. And under new ownership, as uh you referenced, you know, they were just sold. Um, about a week or two ago, so I'm not sure if that's gonna impact rates right away. But they're already sort of leading the leagues, if you will, with uh, with their rates. Will still be com- very competitive with that.
Right. Thank you, Mister Scollins. Any other questions for our Finance Director, extraordinary? Alright, Mister Albert?
So um, I'm not sure if how we're gonna do this motion, if we're gonna wait, i- i- is uh.
We're gonna make the motion today, but it was, it's going to be effective next year.
Okay, alright, cool. So I uh move that the board consider the vote of support um. For the uh Metropolitan Rank Rate Increase Request as presented by the Finance Director.
Second, with the with the addendum that it's.
Yeah, with the.
Involvement to next year.
Exactly.
Okay. And then Mister McCourt, was that a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Just for clarifying, clar- good, the the rink was named after uh, five-headed Johnny Metropolis, just FYI.
Thank you. Alright, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And the Chair as well, five zero. Thank you, Mister Scollins, and thank you for uh, helping us be creative.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the input uh in the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Okay, so next, um, I'm gonna take these one at a time. They're, they're all about special town meetings, but uh first um. Uh. I make a motion that the board consider to call a special town meeting on November eighteen, twenty twenty-four, in the anticipation for the funding. Needs for the new Galvin Middle School.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and just uh for the public, if they're not aware. Uh, there is a project uh to try and re uh, place the Galvin Middle School. Uh, in the, we need to call a special town meeting for that, and that's what this vote is for. Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Do a roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And the Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Okay, the next is uh, I make a motion that the board um. Call an additional special town meeting on November eighteen, twenty twenty-four for all other zoning and non-zoning article submissions.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and this is just a little confusing, but it's a town meeting inside a town meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Do a roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And the Chair as well, five zero. Going as fast as I. Go ahead, Mister Albert.
Next, I move that the board um, open the warrants for the special town meeting on September eleventh. Twenty twenty-four, enclose the warrants on September twenty-three, twenty twenty-four at nine thirty AM.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and this is just our standard process for opening the warrants uh and closing the warrant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Alright, so next is a change of manager for Top Golf. Uh, all the paperwork is in order for this change of manager request. I make a motion that the board approve the change of manager for Top Golf to Willie Wilson.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
The Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Okay, next um, I uh, move that the board consider the approval of personal action forms following police retirements. In FY twenty-four, through present. Um, Scott Lenhart, Eric Wade, Paul Gallagher, and Paul D and G and Petro.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and again, this is just the um, personal action form for retirees. Um, so we wish these officers the best in their retirement. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Uh, Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
So next up, as I make a motion to consider the approval of personnel action forms for the following promotions. Joseph Savacy to Lieutenant Brendan Healy. To Sergeant. Is that right?
Yes.
To Sergeant. Uh, Benjamin Berkowitz to Sergeant and Martin Dunlop to Sergeant. There was a misprint there.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. So as a reminder, uh, Canton is a uh civil service town. Uh, these are promotional exams and in order to be appointed, you have to top the exam, uh, which is what these individuals have done. Um, the amount of sergeants and lieutenants is considered um. Is uh, sorry. Uh, is is a result of the Police Reform Bill passed a few years ago. Uh, that states that we need uh X amount of uh lieutenants and sergeants. Uh, and so this is uh, as a result of some of the recent retirees as well. Alright. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, five zero. Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And the Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Alright, next I move that the board approve the appointment of GSI Technician Brooke Cleathero.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Next, I move that the board approve the appointment of the HVAC Technician Scott Parsons.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes, sir.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And the Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister.
Right. Next, um, at the request of the Parks and Recreation Director and Human Resource Director, I move that. The board approve the appointment of seasonal Parks and Recreation Staff Claire Gro- Grogan. And Shannon Lane.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes, sir.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And Chair as well, five zero. Next Mister Albert.
Next, this is an appointment for the Office Administrator for the Water and Sewer Department due to the retirement of Pat Colley. I move that the board approve the appointment of member to the Water and Sewer Rate Policy Committee, Michael Gerrier.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
And Chair as well, five zero.
Next, uh, on the agenda, I move that the board approve the one-day entertainment permit for Trillium Brewing. Company Inc., one hundred Royal Street on Sunday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, from twelve PM to six PM. For their Oktoberfest to be held on the outdoor patio contingent upon police fire and ZBA in building approval.
Second.
Um, can I make any amendment to that motion?
Sure.
Since the um, the next one is the same, um, that's just for a different event, though. Um. But we include the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, one-day entertainment permit as well?
So moves.
Okay, so any further discussion? Hearing none, this is to approve both the September twenty-second and.
October thirteenth.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Uh, roll call vote, Mister Conley?
Yes.
Mister McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Enough of these jokers tonight. What do you think, Rita?
Oh my God, if I had enough of them.
Let's get rid of them.
Unbelievable. I I I just, you know, I stayed on for the promotions and the retirement. I wanted to ask a question, but because we're not transparent in this town, they don't let us ask questions, even though it's an agenda item and we should have been able to ask questions. Um, so it is um. It's really pathetic. It's really pathetic, and I hate to say that, cause I try to be. I try to see whatever positive there is, and I'm just not finding any tonight. Uh, it's very um, disappointing, very disappointing.
Did, uh, they just had, I was switching over the. Computer down to the studio here, and I I'm not uh showing my camera tonight, cause I'm not feeling that well, for people wondering why. Uh, just taking a night night off the camera tonight. Uh, I I wanted to go live for Rita, that's why, that's why I'm still doing the show anyways, but um. I was switching over and I just wondering, like, did the, did they vote five, nothing on the son of Berkowitz to get?
Oh yeah, everything's five across the board. Everything was five across the board, except the Dedham Street um. Islands.
How how can, how can that happen? I I was expecting Chris Albert to recuse himself, since his brother is a police officer, that. Should he recuse himself for all police?
Yeah, you know what, it's, you know what, that's a good thing. I didn't hear them say he recused himself. I I don't know if anybody saw that.
I don't think so.
You know, because who, because it's, it's a joke anyways. I mean, you know, these P, Eric Wade was supposed to have retired. Long ago, you know, he uh, he's our, you know, alleged pedophile cop. Uh, goes right great with Matthew Farwell and uh, William Farwell and um. Robert Devine and what's the other guy's name? Um, I can't think of his name. Uh, but you know, it is um, it's something else, it really is, it's just. It's a disgrace. So, you know, they got four people retiring, and then they got four people. This is a top-heavy organization. And Mike Lawfkin can be darn sure that I'm gonna look up this bill that he said. That said that we support a one to one-point-eight ratio uh for leadership in here in the town. So basically. Not even one leader in Canton, doesn't have two full-time employees. So it's like one leader for maybe one and a half employees. Um, and that's ridiculous. And then, you know, so you'd think that with that kind of leadership, you'd have. Impeccable uh policing, but we don't. We don't. So not only do we have people, eleven, which is twenty-nine percent of the police force, make. Forty percent of the money. How about that? And three of them are patrolmen, Mike. Three of them.
Unbelievable, that a patrolman makes that much money.
Patrolman makes, one made two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, um, and the other uh, made. One made uh, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, I think it was, and I, they were over, over two-hundred thousand, three of them, three.
You have leaders of countries that don't make that much money.
Yeah, and we have patrolmen. And so, no worries. I've asked for key payroll information. Because clearly, somebody in this town is not looking at this stuff, in my opinion. And so I'm gonna look at it. And I am looking at it, and I'm asking questions, and unfortunately, it takes me ten days to get answers to my questions. But we are gonna ask questions, and we're gonna continue to ask questions to hold this police department accountable.
Let's talk about the big question tonight, cause. Mike Lawfrin, what what a friggin goof, what a stooge this guy is. I mean, he reads this statement.
Yeah, he's terrible.
Field that we all wanted to hear, and we just, I heard it and I was just scratching my head. I'm like, what did he just say? And he just moves on. And then you ask the question.
And then he cuts that into my three minutes.
Yeah.
And then he took it for my three minutes.
Took it for your bit. He's such a prick. He did not have to do that. He was such a prick when he did that too. And he thought he was funny. He thought, he thought he was really sticking the knife in ya. He he's a, he's a piece of shit, that guy.
Yeah. He he thought that, you know, he can just do that because he's hiding behind Zoom. And I think it gives him a false sense of power. You know, they got the mute button. Uh, they don't have to see us standing up at the mic. And um, I think that it's not reality. And I I I, and I I really don't, and I think that. The more we see them conduct the meeting in this environment, the worse they look. The worse they look.
Especially.
And they don't even know it.
It was on display tonight. It was.
Yeah. Tonight, I I have to say, is the worst night I've seen in a long time. I mean, the nights are bad. But tonight felt really bad. I mean, here we have a police chief. Who gets into an accident and takes her six weeks to announce it, and only announced it because Turtle Boy uncovered it. Then you have Eric Wade, who supposedly retired a while ago, but now they're just announcing it. Then you have Kevin Albert, who is disciplined. And we don't find out for about six weeks, only until it comes out some other way. And they think they're transparent? They're not transparent. That's why we need a police audit. And so I'm gonna do my spiel one more time. For anyone who's watching. We have an active RFP out there for people to come in with, to bid on our job to do the police audit. And we really need people who know people that are in the police audit world to come forward. And get this RFP from Randy Scollins. They have to email him. Uh, or call him to get the RFP and bid on it. Uh, we are, it's uphill, you know, they did the scope of services. Uh, with the citizens in the audience, and now they're gonna do, I I don't know how they're gonna do. Um, the RFP and the bidding process, but I know they're gonna try to make it as. Uh, secretive as they can to keep the public out of it. And part of it, I know, is by design, because the public can't be involved in it. But there are things that you can do to um. You know, make sure that the public feels involved and trusts in the process. And we don't trust in the process, because the three of them will decide who the audit firm is. Dave and Kathleen are the minority, and they know it. And they know they ultimately hold the cards to whoever is chosen. So that's not gonna stop us from doing what we need to do, because if they don't do the job, we will do the job. So that's really what I have to say. You can tell, you can tell that I really got ticked off at this meeting tonight. It's like, shut us down, shut us down, don't answer questions. It's so wrong. It's so wrong.
Yeah, let's talk more about this Kevin Albert thing, cause he he leaves a statement out there. And I still don't even know what the hell he said, but he basically said. What Kevin Albert has accepted, something. I don't know what it was. What did Kevin Albert accept?
They're not saying. So the fact, I mean, can you imagine? You have a town that has at least two, if not three murders, that are very, well, one's not a murder, one, the guy died. But the question is, where did he die and who dragged his body to that lawn? That's the question, and we know who lives in that vicinity. You know, but that's another story, cause we don't know. But what we do know is Sandra Birchmore was murdered. And Sandra Birchmore was framed, framed by dirty cops. And it made it look like uh, a suicide, when in fact she was murdered. We have John O'Keefe. Where a woman was framed. So Sandra Birchmore was framed, and Karen Reed was framed. And, you know, by dirty cops. And here we have hide, hide, and not tell the people what's going on. You know, by Helena, not telling us what the disciplinary action was for Kevin Albert. Only raises concerns and does nothing for transparency.
God, who who did the investigation? Who did the investigation of uh, this, like? All the shit on Kevin Albert that's come out in the truck?
Yes.
Who investigated it? Who actually, we we, you have, we have no idea. There's no transparency. Who ran the investigation? What are the results of the investigation? Who ran the investigation? What are the results of the investigation? What were the allegations? What were the findings? This, this is like what transparent government does. They've done none of that.
No, none of it, none of it, you know, and they just won't answer anything. So, you know, my feeling is, okay, fine, don't answer it. I'm going to get the answers and I'm going to publish them. And, you know.
Say Kevin Albert investigated himself. I love that comment. That's, is that what, Chris Albert? They, they, you know what? They fired an independent investigation. They picked Brian Albert. Brian Albert ran the investigation with Martin Kraft. I mean, who the hell knows?
Yep. Somebody says you can contact the, oh, Las, Las Vegas cops. Is that the thing? They know, might know someone. Yeah, that's a good idea. Maybe I'll reach out to them. That's a, that's a very good idea. Thank you. Um, that was the people that, uh, micro, uh, micro dots had on the other day. That was awesome.
They were on our show and Sean's show.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Yeah.
Very good.
So, um.
Good guys.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're awesome. They're, I mean, that's what true cops, that, those are true cops. Those are true heroes. That's what we expect in this country is people like them. And what we get is, you know, eleven people making over two hundred thousand dollars who use, uh, leaf blowers, red solo cups, stop and shop bags, do not, uh, seal off the crime scene, abandon the crime scene, do not separate the witnesses and do not knock on the cop's door uh, who's a first responder to tell them there's another cop, which any cop would have been out there. And we all know Brian Albert was not sleeping through that. So, you know, it's just, it, it's a joke. And the more, the more they do what they do, the, it just looks so bad.
And then they approve, uh, Burke, Berkowitz's son for a promotion, which is another like
Yeah.
nepotism in this town, apparently.
Oh, my God. And then one of the guys that they promoted, so they promoted somebody to lieutenant. And they promoted three people to sergeant and one of them, uh, was Healy. Healy's the one who pulled over Jennifer O'Donnell. And by the way, lost in court. Um, you know, because he couldn't say for sure. She had a cell phone in her hand. Um, nice going, Haley. Uh, Berkowitz gets promoted, uh, and he, that was his, his twenty twenty-three salary was a hundred and forty-four thousand, which, you know, maybe he could have made that. I, I don't know. And then Dunlap, the guy Dunlap was hired and promoted to sergeant. He was hired in the middle of twenty twenty-two. So this person, and I don't know who he is, who was hired in the, probably the middle of twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-three, as a patrolman, he made a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars.
Unbelievable.
A hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for someone who's been on the force, maybe eighteen months. You know, what's going on here? I, I, I think some people know how to do the overtime game and some people don't. Or some people participate and some people don't, but there's something wrong. Um, in my opinion. And, you know, we, so we are a top-heavy organization here. And we are also paying forty percent of the policing money to eleven people. And most of those people were witnesses. And this is what we get for a crime scene. I, it, 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 it's it's wrong. It's wrong. I have no problem paying people for performance jobs, but we have not seen performance come out of this force. We have not.
Tonight was just, it, it was so in your face. Are, are they going to continue to do select board meetings with Zoom?
Yeah, yeah. Next select board meeting is Zoom. It already says it. It already says it. Yep. It already says it. So this is the way.
And they've had no, and they've had no public discussion about that either, have they?
They don't care. They don't.
Where, where, where's Trish on that? Like, why hasn't?
I don't talk, Trish is not my friend. I mean, I, you know.
She just does the executive stuff behind the closed doors. She doesn't speak up, just anything.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I see what you see. I see what you see. So, you know, that's what I say. Um, you know, uh, it's disappointing. Uh, you know, they're all disappointing, really. Um, and I hate to say that, but, um, you know, um, I do believe JR is for the people. I always support JR. Uh, I just do. I have spoken to JR many times after the select board meetings and I believe JR to be a genuine, honest human being. And I, I, I believe he is, you know, um, I don't know much about Mike. Um, but he's not coming off in leadership. He does not.
He's coming off as a, as a, as a micro dick. He's a dick. He is a dick.
Someone who doesn't belong in that job.
Yeah.
You know, even Tom Theodore.
Funny and tough guy and slick and he's not. He's an asshole.
Yeah, even Tom Theodore was listened more.
Yeah.
You know, and, um, you know, Mike is not doing a good job being the chairman. He's not. And, uh, it's embarrassing.
I mean, he got, he, it's funny because you could see a Mike as a nice guy when, when they're talking about, uh, hockey ice time.
Yeah.
Or lacrosse or, you know, but anything that's uncomfortable, all of a sudden he's.
Exactly. Like when he talked about, you know, Tom Gunning, who died tragically, you know, he came to life.
Yeah.
And I do think Mike is, is a nice guy. I mean, I, I don't have any.
I'm not saying he's a horrible person, but he's coming off as a total dick at these meetings.
Yeah, he's coming off as somebody who doesn't belong in the role.
No, exactly.
You know, he does not belong in that role.
And, and dude, like I gotta say to Mike, Mike Lawfrin, watch your show, dude.
Exactly.
Like, people ask me, you know, how, how did you become a host? You know, how you got skills and this? I don't have skills. I, I just watch my show.
Right.
I watch my show back. If it sucks, usually it's me. So usually when you have a show, it's usually the host that screws it up. So how do you get a better show? You listen back to your friggin show. Mike Lawfrin, you need to watch your show. Your show sucks. You guys suck and you're obviously not watching it. Like, I, I don't see how they can watch this week after week and not realize that they have to change things. Like this is not rocket science, Mike Lawfrin.
The only thing I can think is that it's so bad under the covers that it's better for them to look the way they look than for us to get a real look at what's going on. But all of this is public information. So we are going to continue to request, I mean, I know how to manage, right? I know. It's, I know how to manage it and I'll lead. I know the questions to ask. And, you know, I'm not the only one. And, you know, so all they do by not answering our questions is leave it to us to do the research. And that's what we're doing. We're doing the research and we, we will get the answers because it's public information. And we will put the information out there, whatever it is. And, um, uh, it's just not going to look good. I, I, it's just not going to look good. I, I, I don't think so. You know, I really don't. I mean, I, I, I see things that don't make sense. And maybe there's a logical explanation for it, but when they won't communicate, it's very hard to collaborate.
Yeah, exactly. And then you get the viral videos that are going to go out tonight and tomorrow based on the call, the, the comment, the public comment, because that was fire tonight. Can we talk about the public comment? There were four, four speed, four public commentators that I just loved. Uh, you want to talk about them? Because you know them all, Rita. Some of them better than me.
The public comments?
Yes, you were one of them.
Yeah, I was one of them. So I, I just, I, I mean, I, what did I talk about? I talked about the, the, um, the, I talked about how we're top-heavy. I mean, as an organization, uh, Canton Police Department is top-heavy. We have, based on the twenty twenty-three government salaries information, we have forty full-time employees in the police department. Of those forty employees, thirteen of them, which is thirty-three percent, a third of them are in, uh, leadership. And, um, twenty-seven, uh, are, are not. And, you know, thirteen divided by twenty-seven isn't even two people per person. I mean, it's just, you know, uh, it's, it's, we're top-heavy and we're paying, uh, we paid two point six million dollars to eleven people, eleven. Eleven people made that money. And, you know, of the total forty, we paid six point nine million. We got six point nine million on our police force and they don't even know how to handle a crime scene. Or do they? And so that was one, you know, so I talked about that. And, you know, when I asked a question about the Kevin Albert thing that cut into my, he cut that into, I mean, who does that? I asked a question because his information he provided was incomplete. And because I asked a question, he eats into my time when I asked a question because what he said was incomplete.
Yeah. And you notice he didn't tell you that he was going to cut into your time until like a minute's gone by.
Yeah, I said, I want to ask a question.
Said right at the, no, he could have said, this is all on the clock. Like, because he said that right away, but he had to be a prick and wait, and then he thought it was funny, like.
But what leader, you know, if somebody's asking a point of clarification, what leader is going to say?
Something so important like this where you have a, you have a cop who nationwide has looked like a fool. He looks like a fool on national television during this trial. And you have all these questions about it and you're silencing everything and you won't even, like, I mean, it would have been so much better if you just even said, like, our lawyers tell us we can't say anything else. He could have said something like that.
You know, but the lawyer should give.
A moron. The guy is not fit for what's going on here.
No, he's not, none of them, no. We are in dire situation here in this town. We are. And people say, oh, you know, people, you know, the, the McAlberts and family and friends, you know, disagree with that. Well, they can disagree with that all they want, but it doesn't make it real. You know, and now that twenty twenty has aired their show and regardless of how people feel about it, it gets the conversation going. And that's what we want, you know? And so with the twenty twenty thing out there, more and more people are seeing what's going on in this town. And Sandra Burchmore um, is a travesty of justice. It, it, I mean, it's corruption at its worst. And, uh, pedophiles have been protected. Pedophiles have been protected. And that's wrong. And our children have been at risk. And I wonder how many other more children were impacted by these people in Stoughton. And some of these people in Stoughton grew up in Canton. I mean, it's not, doesn't make for a good town. You know, I mean, it doesn't make for a, a, a good impression of who ends up in our, a legal system and our law enforcement.
I want to thank Luna's mom, twenty-four for gift and ten membership. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone in the super chat tonight. A lot of super chats coming through. Thank you so much. And congrats to all those, uh, new ten people. We got over like five hundred members now, so. I'm, I gotta work on a member's show eventually. I keep saying that, but I am working on something. We'll see.
Yeah. Well, there's so much you want to get out there for everybody. So, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm going to do something a little different than, you know, some of the other, I'm, I'm working on something. I'll just stick with that. Um, I want to, uh, go back to the other public comments because there were some very interesting public comments. There was a guy that sounded like Maza Media to me. Uh, I think it was the Ducksworth guy.
Yeah.
Did you hear his comments?
Yeah, I did.
He said that the, uh, board should apologize to Jennifer O'Donnell, which I thought was such a great comment, actually. It's like, wow, like, he, he, what did you think about some of his statements tonight?
Oh, they're always great. They're always great. Um, I, I, I agreed with him, you know, I, I, I think the board, the police officer, I think the police officer, uh, is afraid of getting sued and he should be sued, you know? Um, you know, uh, if that were me, I, I, you know, I, I, it, it was horrible. It was horrible. Uh, what he did, uh, very chilling, very chilling. And, um, you know, um, the board, that's why that meeting is why they have reverted to the Zoom meeting is because of that meeting. And uh, it's just sad. It's just sad. It, it, it just, I, 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 you know, we're looking for progress. We're not getting progress. We are going backwards every single week. We're going deeper and deeper into this and we need leadership to get us out of this. So, um, this police audit is so important. And if we, the people do not feel that the right firm was selected, um, we're not going to accept that. And so, you know, um, we're not going to accept that. I mean, I'm not going to accept that, you know, if, um, people think, and I'm not saying this is what they're going to do, but, you know, we're cognizant of the fact that there's three of them and Kathleen and Dave, and their vote is going to outweigh Kathleen and Dave, unless they vote the same thing. And we do not want someone who is affiliated with the Canton Police to do this police audit. We do not want a firm that has retired Mass State Police people working on this audit. And that is the problem. The problem is people within the Canton Police Department and people within the Mass State Police that have done what they have done, we no longer trust. So we do not want anyone who is affiliated with either organization to be doing the audit. So if somebody comes through that comes from the Mass State Police, and I know that they had a firm in New Hampshire that they wanted, uh, I don't recall the name of the firm, uh, but I do believe that it is, um, uh, retired or former Mass State Police people. Well, well, that's not going to be acceptable. So let me just state that right now. If they think they're going to go forward with that firm, not going to happen. And if they do, we will do whatever we need to do to make sure that we get the right firm in here. And I am aware that there are other options. And so I am also looking at other options for the town. Um, if we do not feel comfortable with who is selected as a firm. So, um, that's just the way it is. So even though they have the majority vote, we are not taking it laying down.
Yes.
We are not taking it.
Yeah.
So we will get what this town needs with collaboration or without it. This town of Canton will get what it needs to recover and heal and rebuild trust. And I will make sure of it.
Now, we've had a lot of, uh, questions tonight about John Como. I, I was watching some of the stream. I, I flashed about the screen for like a minute tonight. Have we had, had any update? He didn't get in trouble or anything, did he?
Not that I'm aware of. He texted me. Um, he texted me. He brought the cake and about fifteen people come out and neighbors came out and neighbors had cake.
Awesome. Oh, I think he's good. I, I, after this is, you know, done, I'm going to actually stream for the end of the show. I'm going to stream his live stream tonight.
Yeah.
So that people get to watch him too. So we're going to replay that definitely, you know, as soon as we get off with Rita here, we're going to, that's how we're going to close the show. I'm just going to end with John's stream so we can watch John. Everyone wanted to see what John was doing tonight. So we'll definitely watch that.
Yes.
There was also this other guy that's called, there was a woman, who is the woman? Sweeney? What's her name?
Yeah, Brenda. That's Brenda. Brenda and Dennis.
Yeah, Brenda and Dennis. They're the ones who had bleach on their lawn too.
Yeah, well, it wasn't bleach, Simclean fifty, which is even more toxic than bleach.
Yeah, that's right. It's even worse than bleach.
Yeah.
So she spoke tonight. She was really good.
She was really good. Yep, she was good. And, um, somebody else called in.
Yeah, this other guy.
Kind of slow. They walk kind of.
I, I almost thought it might be John Como imitating, uh, Turtle Boy, but that's why, if you were like, is it John or is it Turtle Boy?
I think it was Turtle Boy.
Oh, I think it was. I think Turtle Boy had an imitation going at first, like he tried to disguise it a little bit. And then at the end, we, we all knew who it was. It was just, that was freaking amazing. That was so.
When they open up the meeting, that's what happens. People can call in. And people can tell them what they feel and, um, they have to listen.
What do you think Chris Albert was doing off screen when that was going on?
I don't know. I, I, you know, I don't think Chris Albert knows what he's doing. I don't think he knows. He just sits there and, you know, tries to read and, um, you know, um, my, uh, it, it, it's comical. It really is. It's, it really, it's sad. It's, 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 um, it's sad. In my opinion, tonight was sad. You know, you, you hope that your town moves forward and, you know, or, or stand still. Uh, but what I'm seeing is we're going backwards and I don't see anyone, uh, you know, this should be a majority vote. They should do a, and I know some of those people do not want to do this. They should do a, and I know some of those people do not want to do this by Zoom. And I heard that Trish is one, and I heard that JR is another. And, you know, the other three clearly, you know, they don't want to be transparent. And, um, you know, it's just, um, it's just sad. And if they think that doing this, that, you know, we're just gonna go away, it, we're not. What it does is it motivates us to get the job done. You know, if they're not gonna do it, then step aside and we'll do it. And I will look up that bill that he said, because I find it hard to believe that, uh, there would be a bill that calls for a one to 1.8 ratio. That's ridiculous.
Zero.
It's ridiculous. I mean, why don't we just, they're all making, you know, they're all making oodles of money. And, uh, it's a lot of money. And like I say, I, I don't have a problem paying. Do the job. But we didn't see that with Sandra Birchmore. We didn't see that with John O'Keefe. You know, we're paying these people a ton of money for incompetence.
What about, uh, after the cases and trials and all this stuff is over? We do a GoFundMe to, to, to get this monument, this monument for this Turtle Boy. It was suggested by one of the callers tonight. What do you think about that?
I don't know. I, I mean, what monument in Canton?
Yes.
No, no.
I think we need a Turtle Boy monument. It was suggested tonight. I'm, I'm down. I'll help fundraise for it.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, the town is divided with Turtle Boy. And, and I don't think that that is, uh, you know, he did a great job. I mean, he did a great job and he continues to do a great job. I, I think if we want the town of Canton to heal, um, I'm not sure that that's gonna help the town heal. Because there's a lot of, and, and it, look, you know, a lot of people have opinions based on, um, his show before Karen Reed and after Karen Reed, you know? And, but, um, you know, he's a hero, no question about it. I just, I just don't know if, uh, you know, a statue or anything, um, in the town of Canton, uh, is appropriate. But, you know, I'm just one person.
I see it happening. I, I'm just saying, like, I, I feel like it's gonna happen. Not, not this year, not next year.
Yeah.
Like, say five years down the line.
Yeah.
Cause I think shit's gonna come. I don't know. We'll see. We'll see.
Well, you know what, Mike? I, I, you know, I'm thinking more immediate term. But you're saying like a few years down the road after everything
After the cases are done.
Yeah, you know, then, look, this is history.
Some people are saying it's stupid. This is Roland says it's downright stupid. What? I don't think it is. I think it's hilarious, actually. And I think, uh, I loved it. I, I loved everything he said tonight. I thought it was so frigging good.
Oh, it was so great. It was so great. I mean, I loved it. I'm laughing, you know, when I'm listening to him speak. And look, he will always be part of this history. This is history, you know? And we are where we are because he cracked the story. And, you know, and everybody came together. I mean, and that's, that's a great thing. You know, I want to remind people that what happened to Karen Reed and Turtle Boy exposing the facts and people rallying together. That's what is great, you know? People came together from political party didn't matter. We came together to support our values. Because the evidence, it was common sense. You did not need any kind of a degree to understand Karen Reed was framed. And it brought the best people around the world together and united in support of truth and justice. And that's a beautiful thing. And, you know, Canton, I mean, this story, it, it, this is historic for this country. I, I really believe that this will, uh, be talked about, uh, for years to come. And Turtle Boy is definitely a hero. And some way I'm sure that there'll be something, uh, because Canton is going to recover. So, you know, maybe it's part of the recovery. I, I don't know what the answer is, but Canton will recover. I promise people that, you know, Canton will recover. We will come back from this. Because there's so many good people and there's more good people than there are bad. You know, and that's true everywhere, but we have to keep it that way. And the only way we can keep more good than bad is for the good to speak up. And we need people to speak up and continue to spread the word to everybody. And, um, Canton will recover, you know? There is a firm, uh, in, that works for the federal government called, uh, it's called COPS. Community, something, community, I don't know, community operations policing or something like that. And I'm gonna look into it and you can get grants for it and the federal government will come in and reevaluate your, um, town. So if, you know, the powers to be try to eke through a firm that, uh, the citizens do not believe is in our best interests, then, uh, I'll reach out to the federal government to do it. And matter of fact, I, I wish, I, I might reach out to them anyways. And, um, we already have, actually, somebody already reached out to them, uh, to send Randy some information. So whether Randy sends it to them or not, I don't know. Uh, but there is a firm, uh, and it's in Washington DC and it's a part of the Department of Justice. And that's really who I want to do this. And maybe what I do, uh, is reach out to them to try to get information, although you have to put information down for the town. You have to work for the town. So that makes it kind of tricky. Um, especially if the town doesn't respond. But, um, I think I'm gonna do that and, you know, try to get that going as well. Uh, we want to make sure the audit is done and we want it right. And if we don't feel it's right, it's not gonna work.
Excellent. I, I can't wait to see the results of the audit. When it's done and we see what's in there, especially the overtime stuff, I think you're gonna
I'm already looking
Evidence room, I can already predict, because, you know, we know on other audits what they find. It's always evidence room and overtime. Those are the two obvious scams out there. And I think a lot of, uh, the Canton Police Department are probably nervous about that.
Yeah, I'm already looking into the overtime. I'm already requesting, I don't need to pay for an audit.
A lot because obviously, I mean, I want to thank you for being here, Rita, tonight. What, what were your final thoughts tonight that you want to share with everyone before we wrap it up?
Um, I just want people to get out there and, and spread the word. Spread the word of the Sandra Birchmore, Karen Reed, the fact that Canton needs an audit firm to come in here, audit what's going on and give recommendations to make it better. Uh, that's what I'm hoping for. And, you know, people never lose faith, uh, never give up. And, um, don't stop until you get what it is you asked for. And that is what I plan to do. So, and I appreciate everyone's love and support. Uh, it means so much to us. Uh, and we will, um, we will rise. Canton is in a beautiful location. It's a historic town and it's got the best people. And we have the best people in, all around us that have come together in this movement. And this movement will do it. We'll get the job done. So let's keep going.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here again tonight, Rita. And, uh, thank you for speaking up at the select board and keeping us updated and fighting for the citizens of Canton.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. I appreciate your support. Just keep it going. We love it. And, uh, we'll speak soon. Talk to you later.
Have a good night and, and good luck on the audit. I know you're working very hard on trying to solicit as many bids as possible. So like Rita said, if there's anyone that's, uh, especially if you know people who do law enforcement contracting that, you know, specialize in that type of work or investigations, to submit a bid for this. Cause this is, you know, a big deal to get as many bids as possible. So they can have true independent review or a true independent Canton Police audit. And that's what Rita's been just drumming for every time she comes on this show. So I hope people hear that and reach out to your friends and family and people you know in law enforcement to, to get the word out, to, to get as many bids for this as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mike. I'll talk to you later.
Thank you, Rita. Have a great night.
You too.
And we're gonna close tonight. I'm just gonna play the clip. Uh, someone just got a membership. They said, how did I get a membership? You got it from probably Luna's mom. She bought, uh, 10 of them tonight. Thank you so much to Luna's mom. Thank you to everyone who's been super chatting us tonight. Buzzing for true. Thank you. Thank you, Luna's mom again. She did a bunch of them, actually. Thank you, Luna's mom. Thank you, little Irish girl. I want to thank Amy in Boston or Amy Boston, Amy Irish Boston, I guess. Little Irish girl, thank you so much. Uh, what is this one? Romi? Romi, thank you so much. They like Maza. And you can see I'm not on camera tonight. I'm not feeling well. I've got some kind of stomach bug going on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna head out. Trying to keep it short tonight. Thank you guys so much. I, I'm not sure when we're gonna have another show. I may take a break for a little bit just right now. Cause, uh, we've been, I've been going so hard lately. I almost feel like I need one right now, especially with, uh, not feeling well. So I'm not sure when, when we'll be back. Uh, I'm sure something will pop up. There's always something I have to come back for. So we'll see you when I see you. I really do miss you guys. I'm sure I'll be back soon because I, I, even if it's just taking some phone calls and I always have to get my fix in from you guys. I love it. I love our little chats and our little community. So thank you so much for watching. Thank you for supporting. Tonight, we're gonna close. I'm gonna, I'm gonna play. Yeah, I need some rest. I think, I, I think that's really what I need. I need some rest. I've just been doing too much for too long. But, uh, I've got to close tonight with John Como. Looks like it's about a 23 minute video of his live that he did outside. I think this is Mike Loffren's house tonight. That's what I'm, I'm gonna get that up on the screen a second here, and that's what we'll close with. And hopefully John's all right. I haven't heard anything from him, so I'll probably text a little later, make sure he's okay, but pretty sure John's fine. I think we would, we would have heard something.
It's So I brought, I brought a cake. I'm here at Mike Lockren's house. I'm bringing town hall to him since they don't want to go to town hall. They want to have their cake and eat it too. You know, I'd love to go up and knock on his door and give them this beautiful cake that I slaved all day making. Very heavy, by the way, this thing, this thing. So if anyone's in the area, they want to come by, I've got plates, forks, napkins. Come on down. I will serve you a piece of cake. So we can all have cake. That's what they want us to do. They want us to eat cake and don't pay any attention to them. So I'm gonna come right out in front. We got cake. And we're ready for that. We're ready for the meeting. Let's go over here.
We're ready. Wait, we're ready. We're ready. I got my gavel. We're ready.
Now, I'm not allowed on his property, so I have everybody watching. I'm on, I am on the town curb with cake. Brian Lockren, Mike Lockren, sorry. Mike Lockren. Since you don't want to go to town hall, I'm bringing town hall to you. I've got cake. I have an offering, a meal of food. I got a meal of food for him.
Pies up.
Mike Lockren, come and get a piece of cake. Cause that's what you are, a piece of cake.
We got the fucking speaker too, kid.
All right. So, but you gotta get out of the street because we can't be, we can't be standing in the street, right? You don't want to get hit by a car. We have cake. Anyone wants a slice of cake? We got cake.
All right.
We have cake. Free cake.
Free cake.
Mike Lockren, we brought you some cake. We have cake. Want a slice of cake? We brought cake. We have a slice of cake. So here we go, week after week, week after week, we have no clue on when these, excuse my French, and I mean this with
No, I got a quick question though. Who?
I mean this with all due respect.
Is this not property?
Pussies won't even go to town hall.
Oh, they can't take the heat.
They won't go to town hall. They'll go up there for executive session.
Shut it down.
Yep. They won't go up there for executive session, but
Shut it down. They can't take the heat.
Cake. We got town hall cake.
They can't take the heat. Shut down the media. They don't want to hear the truth.
Someone like a slice of cake, we're gonna
They don't want to hear the truth, how corrupt, lying, scumbag that they are. Shut it down.
Your lawyer requests, your lawyer requests them, and what happens? They only give you what they want to give. They don't give you all the information.
They want to tell you what you want to hear. They only want to tell you what you want to hear. They only tell you what you want to hear.
Have your cake, have cake, eat it too. Have your cake and eat it too.
Can we get a, can we get a cop detail over here? Charlie, where are you available? Is that corrupt?
There is one up at town hall. So let's, let's, it's a very heavy cake, by the way. It took me hours, hours. It's a, it's a beautiful lemon raspberry cake. So hopefully they don't get me for having a weapon because I have a cake knife here. God forbid. Oh, and if anyone has anything to drink, I brought cups in case, case somebody wants something to drink, I brought some little cups. I don't know. I just had them. So if anything ever happens to my neighbor, they can come knock on my door and I'll give them a couple of little cups, you know? Would you like, do you like a slice of cake? Where's my cake knife? Oh, where's my cake knife? Business up there.
I do have my corrupt, corrupt town, Canton, buying
All right, we're gonna
I can't look, I can't look at Tom because you only got a business of three, that's a problem here. Oh, yeah, yes.
I don't know how many people are gonna come, so I don't want to make too much, uh, would you like a slice of cake?
We're having cake.
We're having cake and eating it too. You can have your cake and eat it too. If they don't want to come to town hall, I'm gonna bring town hall to them.
You are live on Tom's channel. I got you down there.
Here you go. Here's a slice of cake for you. Wait, man, I got forks right here. I got forks, slaved all day.
But I did bring you a list of the oldest, the normative
The town hall cake, because these guys are a piece of cake.
Go on in Norway. Run or, or the northern, Thursday at 7:00 PM at a manual
I got cake. I got cake for everyone. I got enough to feed. If you're in the area, come down. I will personally give you a piece of cake.
Tom, I'll save, I'll save you a piece of cake.
Free cake, free cake, town hall. Town hall's coming to them. It's like, it's like, I'm like the Uber driver of town hall. Where's that? Grubhub. I'm Grubhub. I'm like Grubhub for the select board. Cause they're a bunch of grubs to begin with, a bunch of pussies. Pardon my French. So I got cake. We got the town hall. Beautiful replica of town hall. Took me months. Let's see if we can pass cake to anyone. Hi, I got cake. Would you like some cake? I got cake. Here you go, town hall cake. There you go. It's a lemon raspberry. There you go. Come on back.
Unicorn pony. You guys, you know, the can of life cake is so serious.
Lemon raspberry cake, lemon raspberry cake. I brought town hall to them. They didn't want to go to town hall. I brought town hall to them.
I really expected shirtless John Como.
You never know. You never know. It's early yet. Would you like cake? In an attitude, you can have your cake and eat it too.
Let's go get cake.
I like the thing you're in. What was the one you run?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring them some cake.
Let them eat cake.
Let them eat cake.
Let them eat cake.
Mike Lockren, you want a piece of cake?
Are you cutting your face?
I can cut you a slice.
Listen, this is
World's loudest
This cake, we keep everybody, you want your cake, you can get it.
I made it. I made this. I threw you all day to make this cake. No, I did not get it at the Reno's. I did not get this cake at the Reno's. So we're all down here. We're all here. Mike Lockren. Mike Lockren.
Yeah, take a mic.
Oh, boy.
Mike Lockren, this is my third time here. I have not touched your property. I'm still asking, when are you gonna let us back into Town Hall? Let us back into Town Hall. Stop hiding in your living room, your dining room. Come out, go to Town Hall, have your meeting at Town Hall. Stop. You can end this, Mike Lockren.
That's my girl Raina.
Don't make me take my shirt off. I do have new boots. I got new boots.
You have been warned. For the warning, for the warning.
All right, now he's bringing people with him. There's people here. It was okay when it was one person. For the new, for the, for people that might be just tuning in. Mike Lockren doesn't wanna go up to Town Hall because the people, people have voices, so I'm bringing Town Hall to him. Right?
Tasty Town Hall.
I didn't bring any drinks, but if anyone had some drinks, we could all share. You have drinks, we can all share. I brought cups.
Get my earrings out of those too.
I got cake. We got cake. Mike Lockren, I'm gonna show you how a meeting could be run, okay? This is how you start a meeting. Is there anybody that would like to talk for their three minutes? I'm giving you the mic. You can talk for three minutes. Colleen? Colleen, would you like to talk for three minutes? I'm gonna show Mike how to run. I'm gonna show him how to run a select board meeting.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to talk? For three minutes. Colleen, here you go. Your, your time starts now.
Okay, so I just wanna know.
We're just gonna let her talk.
I just wanna know why corrupt Canton cop Charlie Ray thinks that he can overtake a dirt driveway and turn it into a town road and then build a storage container on the back of the road of a business that's been there for thirty years, okay? That's, no, a shed, a shed on town property. Now, and also fill in on town property to make his, so this is, this is, so this is Walpole Street. This wasn't originally his front door. This is a main road in Canton. So when Charlie got promoted to Lieutenant, I don't know, in like twenty fifteen.
You have two minutes left.
He probably, he probably got his own cop car. Well, he changed a dirt driveway into a town road, so he parked his fucking cop car on the back of the street so nobody could see him sleeping on the job collecting taxpayers' dollars.
Colleen, I have a question. I don't wanna take away from your time. But would the town pay to have this survey?
Seven, seven thousand dollars.
So they paid seven thousand dollars?
Seven thousand dollars.
Did they leave the markers in place?
No, there were no markers.
So that you know where the boundaries are. They didn't?
No. Usually, when you do a survey, they put markers to show the propeller.
Absolutely.
No markers. No markers.
Is that because they wanted to hide something?
I think so. They didn't wanna expose that corrupt Canton cop. How funny, how funny is that? So now I got tickets for a storage container that's on my property, my property! My property, seventy-five percent! We go out on that dirt driveway, you fucking pussies, right? But fucking Charlie, sad fuck Charlie, had a storage container that has no fucking tickets, no fucking permit, you fucking scumbags. Fucking clown bitches.
Is my time up?
I think so.
Your time is now up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this forum, our, our town, town meeting here? Is there?
Hands up. Hands up.
Mikey!
Hey, Mikey, Lockren, you fucking pussy, come out of your house, kid. Cuz nobody takes a town meeting seriously anymore.
I have a different approach.
You guys are the laughing stones of America. Newsflash, newsflash.
I hope he's enjoying this one. Tell us how you really feel.
I got my gavel.
I love your gavel. It's a meat tenderizer too. It's a meat tenderizer too.
It's a meat tenderizer cuz I deal with a bunch of meatheads. All right, and then I got my rainbow unicorn pointer stick because John Levis showed up as uh Ed Walsh's bodyguard to issue a ticket to, like, two, three weeks ago. He was his bodyguard, okay? And he wore a rainbow unicorn shirt and took a video of Ed issuing the ticket. And fucking FNF power commitment. Ed, are you safe? Fucking pussies.
Come on, Colleen, tell us how you really feel. Wow, clown town.
Just giving the neighbors cake.
Mike, have you heard me loud and clear yet? That was my old fifth grade teacher.
Oh, no way.
Isn't he at the town meeting right now, isn't he?
I don't know if I should say his name online.
No, they're doing meetings from remote now. They do them from their house. That's why we come here to let them know that we're not giving up.
Hey, 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 hey.
Free Karen Lee.
And she's only twenty-six. What I can really look for in this town is having cake.
Supposed to be like a Marie Antoinette thing.
Yeah, let them eat cake.
She switched shifts with another girl so she could come with me today to support me cuz they listen to me back.
These fucking scumbags. Ed, Uncle Ed showed up with another fucking ticket. Were you wearing a rainbow unicorn shirt? Are you serious? You want me to take a ticket seriously? You're wearing a rainbow unicorn that you can buy on Amazon.
Yeah, yeah.
Take my, take my Town Hall up. What, what do we got for time? What time is it?
It's, it's only seven oh one, dude. The meeting just started.
Seven oh one, we got.
The meeting just started.
Twelve more minutes of free speech. Twelve minutes, Mike Lockren. I got new boots, by the way. So all those people that have been complaining about my, my boots, I got new boots.
Guys.
Whoa, he's doing big things, yeah.
Big things, yes, for you.
The back of his ticket. He saw John Como was sitting on the back of the jacket.
Mike Lockren is on.
Mike Lockren!
Hey, John, this lady over here would love to get a picture with you.
Absolutely. Where? Oh.
You got a whistle, John, would you like one?
I have one on my case, but I love you.
Cuz I don't even want it. That whistle was a nice time.
Uh who's that right here? Can I get that?
I like die a little bit.
Clown town. You want the clown town time?
All right, and you're lucky you got a wooden chair.
Twelve more minutes, Mike Lockren. Have you muted yourself yet, or not? Why don't you speak for your back to Town Hall?
There's no sound on the.
You gotta keep watching us to eat cake. Nothing.
No sound on the select.
No sound, huh? Sound on the select board.
Hey, was this presented by Ed Walsh's new wall?
I got some, you should look it up. They, they should easily.
Was this new fucking curb?
Nope, that's a curb cut. Did you get, did you get a curb cut permit?
I got questions.
Ah, we got questions, Mike, cuz you got a curb cut permit.
Questions, cuz you know what? Who paid for this top?
Yeah, but just to prove this, you have to get a curb cut.
Uncle Ed, wait, Mike, who paid for the top? Was it taxpayers' money? Serious question, you know, who paid for this new paving?
Hey, they're talking about Kevin Albert.
Really?
Why?
Is he, is he back? Is he reinstated?
Just in case of emergency. How we doing on time here? Is anybody speaking at this meeting, Mike?
Yeah, listen.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Of course he did. Watch this. I bet you they're gonna, he was already suspended with pay. That's gonna be enough punishment. All righty, Mikey! They're not gonna tell you what the outcome is. So here's the thing, in executive session tonight, they voted on what kind of uh discipline Kevin Albert was going to get for his, whatever he did, right? I'm telling you right now, it's all held in-house. They're not gonna tell you what happened. He got suspended with pay. It's like a vacation for him and then he's right back at it, right back at it with the rest of them. He's right, Mikey. Mikey, bring us back up to Town Hall.
I'm sorry, right now, I left my gun unattended and.
Any one of us, absolutely. If any one of us left our gun unattended, we'd be in jail. They'd be in our house going through our lockers, going through our ducts, they'd repo everything.
Two years of tickets Uncle Ed has issued in the town of Canton. Well, I've been making fun of him because he sent.
Colleen's on, Colleen's on the mic right now.
He sent a letter through the United States Postal Service.
And here come the police. Everybody out of the street.
By change at twenty-six.
Out of the street.
That had eight regulations. Well, in the eight regulations, he missed number two and number five. So I've been, oh God, the cops are fucking showing up. Is it Charlie?
Hi.
I know you wanted to stand out here. If you guys wouldn't mind just staying off to the side of the road.
We're trying to stay as close to without going on his property as we can.
I got you. I understand. Thank you. We appreciate you.
No, no. That's, that's the only tough thing with this street. The only tough thing with this street is can't go on his property, can't be out on the street, it's a tight street. We know the sidewalks, there's a sidewalk on the other side, and the sidewalk on this side, it's just, they never made it. People have put their driveways out here instead, you know? Mikey!
Mikey!
Fifteen minutes every week. Like I said, for the fifteen minutes of free speech every week, I'm going to be up here until they go back to Town Hall. And Mikey, it used to be just me and you laughed at it. You laughed at your chicken nuggets, didn't you? I heard about it. I heard about that you, you laughed after the fact, the fact that you got balls the size of chicken nuggets. All right, I'm sorry that you're a chicken, but it's no longer just me. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen people right now and your neighbors, Mikey. Mikey! Time to end this. Well, I guess I'll eat cake because he's not, he's not gonna come out of this. We already know he's not coming out of this house. At least you let your blinds open this time, Mikey. So we'll have to see what happens. Uh this is my third time here and the police told him, if I come here three times, you get a restraining order against me, even though this is demonstrated free speech of a public official asking him to come back up to Town Hall and run this town like it should be run. Not out of your dining room, sitting around his Hummels. He's sitting there with his little Hummels and tchotchkes, all right? With his laptop muted, blacked out, so you can't see that. He's got his suit tie on and his, his, his little boxes, all right? Is this how you do your driving school? Is this how you do your driving school, Mikey? Right? You tell the kid to get in the car and you give him a little Fisher Price steering wheel? Come on, Mikey, grow a set. Get back up to Town Hall. I'm done. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go eat cake.